Actually, I.
Can we do that rescinding before we get started on the public hearing? Are we gonna do that?
Um, yeah, we should do the adjustment to the agenda first. We need to remove six point one. We need to remove six point one as well.
I didn't remember if I had read it before I signed. If I did, that's the letter.
I have six. I was gonna say you'd be able to actually bend down.
Welcome, everyone. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. First, we'd like to do, we have an adjustment to the agenda.
So, we're going to, under the public hearings, we're gonna strike the marijuana ordinance amendments. The committee felt that it just was not ready for, for comment or for vote yet. So, we also need to add, under new biz, actually, yeah, it would be new business, to rescind approval of the town meeting warrant for the town meeting on November 4th, to remove Article 2. We also need to add, to approve the amended warrant without Article 2, so there'll be six articles for vote. And we need to remove six point one, appointment of a CEO. He has withdrawn his application. And we noticed in, under abatements, the second to last one. I have an extra one in there. It's supposed to be one thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Under the second figure for 2024.
Instead of eleven million?
Yes.
What was this supposed to be, sorry, Gary?
Uh, one thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
We have to, we have to have it forward.
I move to amend the agenda as stated.
I second.
All those in favor? All in favor? Opposed? All right, we'll move on to opening. I declare the public hearings open. So, we have taken away the marijuana ordinance, so we can continue to work on it. So, we're gonna move on to development standards ordinance amendments. These amendments were brought forward by citizens petition. Do we have? We're just looking at the changes in the red. Does everybody have a copy of this? I can read through it. It's several pages. Do we have any comment on the amendments?
Yes. Is the amendment talking specifically to the agricultural one? Does that go to require zoning for the town?
Yeah, I do not have any answer to that.
I, I tried to read through it. Seems to me if you're gonna have special, um, applications for particular parcels of land, I would think you would have to list them out as, in a particular zone. But then again, it's a pretty confusing thing to try to research unofficially.
Right, and, and I'll, I'll agree to that. I have to do a lot of research on it myself, 'cause I'm just not, not versed in that I have zoning or anything like that.
Just looking down the road, 'cause. And then I, I also, I, I'm not a percent sure, but doesn't it say you think they wanna take away the permitting process for, um, certain buildings and so forth?
Under the agriculture, let me find it, so I don't misquote it.
Yes. Section three, paragraph, section three paragraph. Therefore, no local building permits shall be required for such structures under this ordinance. It's also, I believe, in one other section, correct, Bryce?
Properly. And if that read, we, it's the one that was posted on the town website. There's a bunch of mispronances that differ from the actual wording.
Then they miss, destroy things a little bit. We'll be happy to just kind of answer any questions.
The information on the website is different than what the original official one is?
Yeah.
How do you expect us to vote on it?
We didn't put it online.
It was a copy and paste from a PDF. There could have been typos and, and transitions.
My question, well, but that is on, on the, if the town uses the permitting process to buy the assessment for taxation, I'm assuming, do we have to have some other things? Like a building modification? We did have building modification, we did away with. So, I'm, I'm just asking how that's gonna play out.
I know other towns do that. They just, they do, they've done away with building permits, and they do, like you said, the. I would imagine, and I, and you're probably gonna get this wrong, but we'll have to do something like that so we can keep track, you know, of what's going on.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Kind of, I know we had both a notification and permitting when we did the, uh, development standards ordinance. So, and we eliminated the building notification to eliminate an extra fee in there. It was like a little whammy or whatever, so, um, yeah, so I, you know, something that we're gonna have to sort out, I would assume.
Right, well, I said, I think you said it, said it correctly. This passes, this is something we're gonna have to, have to sort out and kind of work our way through.
But, yeah, the only thing, I mean, I know the town doesn't like that word, I mean, I don't think it's fair that anybody knows that that may be a possibility. I, yeah, I'm saying till we sort it out, how are we gonna know?
Right, and like I said, I just, I don't know enough about zoning to say yes or no on that. But it's something we're gonna have to probably really get versed in and understand as this is kind of breaking things apart. Yes, Bryce?
Just to explain from my understanding of all of that, the wording in the actual amendment is the rural area, which was used from our comprehensive plan. And there's even a map right there on the wall that shows the village area and rural area.
I don't believe it's listed in our comprehensive plan, either one is.
Maybe not the new one, but the one that we have currently, you know, the new one we haven't voted on otherwise. We do have a village area and a rural area.
Now, are you saying that in this red copy, there's, that's missing?
Uh, no, it should be in there. That's under section one. But I guess I don't know the copy you're looking at.
Bryce?
Find it.
That's okay.
Where's the definitions?
Look at this.
I have a copy of that, probably somewhere I did keep it up.
I think every, the selectword thing, which I'll make it off the hand you wrote.
So, what exactly, Bryce, you're saying that some of the wording is a lot different? Could we, can you point that out?
Yeah, so like, I'm looking at the copy here, if I hear page fifty-eight. I think everything's pretty much accurate, except for spelling. Look at page fifty-eight, D. Our copy says laws, this says state jawas. Just for example.
Formatting this skewed as well, which makes it a little less easy to be interested in. But is that pretty much, other than some grammatical stuff? It's formatted, it's pretty straightforward?
Completely gone through everything, from what I see.
So, so other than that, it looks, it looks good?
So far.
So far.
If it's easier, we can send you guys a better copy or something. But I guess the, uh, for the zoning question, page fifty-seven on the copy here. Rural area, under definitions.
The non-TIF area. Includes all areas of Little More Falls designated as rural, agricultural.
That's supposed to be farm.
Farm, okay, yeah. Farm and forest or similarly.
I think that's supposed to be described as.
Oh, yeah, all right, that's just supposed to be one word, yeah. In which agriculture or forestry is permitted or conditionally used, probably for conditional use or.
That would be my guess.
Now, this was brought up when we were talking about, about zoning originally. When we were talking about the, the definition.
Right. So, from my understanding of it, this doesn't imply we need zoning. We're using what's in place now. If something changes, then obviously, it would have to change.
Are there guidelines to follow what does it makes? A parcel that.
I mean, I guess the, this says rural area and non-TIF area.
No contiguous number of acres that somebody has to own or.
No, there's nothing like that that talks about acreage, is there, Bryce?
Nope.
No.
So.
If I say law, there doesn't need to be, from my understanding.
So, at my house, if I wanna add onto my shed, if I have a garden, I can do it without a permit.
Well, state law, in order to have a farm, I don't quote it on this, but I believe it's two thousand dollars gross income annually.
There are guidelines.
Yes.
And those are defined, isn't it? In this amendment, every article of recommendations then referenced by a state law.
Go and look at this.
So, you can actually cross-reference, everything is, everything in here is supported by a state statute. Which is most of our ordinances fall back on that when you read them. It says, you know, follow Title 30A or whatever, for example, so.
I got a question. What, what am I voting on? The copy that I picked up on the table or the copy that Bryce has? I picked up my ballot yesterday. Other people picked up their ballots and voted before that. What are we voting on? Well, I have no idea.
We're voting on this copy that.
With the typos.
Right.
Okay. We're not voting on what Bryce says.
No, it's, it's.
Because this appears to be different.
Just significant spelling and grammatical and formatting errors that couldn't later be used.
Yeah, well, words have meaning, you know?
Exactly.
That's, we agree, but I think it was just a mistake in uploading it or copy and pasting. And pretty sure legally, it also has to be exactly what is worded on the one I gave you. Has to be what's worded on.
So, it has to be what you gave him, so we're putting on what you gave him, which I don't have?
I have not, Laura, but that's my understanding of that.
Yes.
So, you're saying that there's already verbiage written up on how the ordinance will be changed, and that will be the final change? That there will be no adjustments if this passes? It's going to be as whoever has the copy, how it's written? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I don't know if we have, do we have time to make the corrections? Is that gonna be a big deal? Or do we have to hold on to the public hearing?
If it's just typographical and formatting errors, it's, it's not a big deal. If there's any, any word changes that potentially could change meaning, you know, you can't do that.
Wait, is it all, all I've seen so far is spelling and format, nothing?
Well, I would think that if it's just spelling and format, that we should be able to fix that and have it. I mean, it's still gonna be the same amendments.
Well, the other thing too is, as we've discussed several times already, is we, we have to completely redo this ordinance regardless, even after this vote because of LD 1829 and whatever else government will sign into legislation potentially in December anyway. So, there will be opportunity to, to again amend things and give them more clarity.
One other question. Well, this, just to throw it out, this, this has nothing to do with onland protection or forestry protection against any development. It's just permitting procedure, right?
Um, there's some of that, I wanna, I would like to ask the gentleman who wrote it. Can you help answer that question?
I can, I can do the other question.
Bill, could you?
So, this changes that we're looking for amendments has nothing to do with actual onland protection or forestry protection against development coming in then?
Well, well, that's the idea without that regulation. In other words, it would be easier for agriculture and forestry. Therefore, if it's easier, it's more likely to not be spelled, but there is no wording in there. If that, if that answers it.
And there are protections from commercial farming, not pick on marijuana or anything, but that, and that has its own protections in there. Commercial firings, commercial meat processing, commercial labor processing are not. Those are regulated under state law, but in this does not hold rule that. So, the town would still have to follow this state law in terms of those. This amendment is, that the small farm, like the Amish, it allows them the opportunity to, to build things a little bit easier. Somebody wants to start a, like co-op, whatever, you know, the small farm things there.
Co-ops.
Yeah, like a co-op sort of thing, uh, to help them get going.
Some, some of the wording, and we're explaining, center definitions is agriculture includes cultivation of crops, livestock, orchards, hay, timber harvesting, silviculture, rekeeping, on-farm composting, seasonal farm stands, greenhouses, barns and storage of harvested products, farm implements and harvested or produced goods defined under section seven, MRS 152.
I understand, but my question is, you have no protections against development of, of taking a family or developer coming in and building on it and taking it away?
Well, obviously, you'd have to sell your farm for that to happen, or it wouldn't be a farm anymore.
Right.
And then this ordinance wouldn't apply.
And the planning board would likely have some say in before somebody coming in and taking over large amounts of land.
Okay, just, just wanted clarification.
Yes?
So, I have a question on, it says Article Six. When it's saying no, not requiring permits, this is just on the voting thing. I, I haven't had a chance, I haven't gotten that, the full thing to read. But it just says that the town shall not require inspections, permits or approvals under MUDDC for construction activities within the town. What does that mean exactly? Like, my neighbor could put something up without any kind of oversight? Like, what does that look like?
I don't know what it says to say about oversight, but no matter, even if you're, the way MUBIC reads is contractors are still required to follow state guidelines, no matter what. So, I think a lot of this puts it more back on the person's responsibility to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and there are ways to go about that. I'm not saying like you telling your neighbor what to do, but.
You could put like a, I don't know, like a big apartment building or like those type of things would have to have other.
Well, there'd have to be a site plan review. There's, there's, there's more, there's a, that would, a lot of that would go through planning board and stuff. So, there's still, you know, there's still things in there that would, people would have to go through.
Or like a store pop up, those type of things. There's other, what I'm understanding is this is just a, a specific like kind of piece of paper throughout, within the town to, to track really for things being built, and there's other guidelines that people would have to follow per state or, you know, federal guidelines in building things? Is that, is that enough to say there's other ways of oversight for them?
Right, especially for like, where we're under four thousand, that's the way it's, if, if towns are over four thousand, they have to follow. If you're under four thousand, you have to, you can adopt, you have to choose to adopt it. So, you're not necessarily required to do certain, you know, oversight, but it's implied that contractors are required to build to state standards regardless. I'm sorry.
So, what's the benefit? I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the benefit of not having permits.
Right.
What?
Uh, if you, I'll let the gentleman who are proposing the amendment.
I think I could better explain it. So, as it stands right now, we are not enforcing MUBIC, which is state code. Because we have to vote to adopt enforcement. We have yet to do it, but there was some confusion earlier this year whether or not we were. So, all this amendment is doing is putting it in black and white that we are not enforcing MUBIC.
And MUBIC is more about the efficiency of the home. You need certain grades of insulation, certain levels of insulation in your attic. That's, that's a big portion of MUBIC.
Does it, does it change the permitting process or site plan review or any of that? It's basically doing exactly what we're doing now, except we have wording followed in the ordinance. If that makes sense.
And I don't know if you were asking about the on-ordnance?
No, I think you're saying we'll do that.
If it was the actual MUBIC one, that is a different amendment that we haven't discussed yet.
Yeah, 'cause it's one of the things that we have to hold on. Yeah, I agree. I was just trying to understand a little bit more, just because, um, what, like, what is that? Like, what's, what's behind that kind of thing? 'Cause I, like I said, I haven't seen the document to be able to, to read it.
So, MUBIC stands for the Maine Uniform Building Code. And like the, the chair said, it, it is just the building standards that every structure in the state of Maine needs to be built to. What there specifically, the amendment specifically is addressing is this one and two things, uh, yeah, one and two family homes. And the inspection requirements of those, because we are not over four thousand people, we're not required to have those inspections. If we were over four thousand people, the homeowner or contractor would be required to have certain inspections periodically throughout the construction process. Of course, anybody can do that, but because of this, this amendment, um, you would have to hire third-party inspectors to do that.
So, if we were gonna build a home, we would have to hire someone to do?
If you chose to have inspections periodically along the way, you would have to hire a third-party inspector to have those done.
Wouldn't that, having those inspections ensure that all the homes that are newly built, residential homes that are up to the minimum standards in Maine? Instead of, this, without those inspections, definitely somebody could build their own house to a substandard level. It would be a risk in this community or be undervalued or, but overvalued and someone's hurt or whatever that is. At least by having the inspections, the minimum standards are being met within the community.
Right, and that's a legitimate concern. The, I guess if this did pass, then it'd be my suggestion that everybody take, uh, I believe it's the Fire Marshal's website has a list of third-party inspectors, and that it would be worthwhile contacting them and having your bill inspected to cover you and any future, any future, uh, or. Yes, Bryce?
Not entirely accurate, so if, if the bank requires a, there's no permit for, for MUBIC, right? So, if, if a third-party inspector comes in, they could give you a certificate, I suppose, saying it's built to state code, but banks require occupancy permits. Occupancy permit's still required under this, which has a bunch of failed saves in fire, block, that type of stuff. There's still inspections done, it's just we're not enforcing state code.
Yeah, 'cause it's still, I mean, when I remodeled my house, the bank required a building permit.
Yep.
Before they would do it.
Yep, you'd still get, that has nothing to do with a building permit. So, you'd still get the building permit.
Just the inspections from the code enforcer are very. Just the inspections from the code enforcer are very different. So like down in Portland, every step of the way, they're inspecting the property to make sure that it meets those minimum standards in Maine.
They're over four thousand.
They are over four thousand. Here, there's no inspections to make sure that it will meet those, well, the minimum standards.
There is now, but there won't be inspections.
There still will be inspections, it's just for an occupancy permit.
But all that stuff could be ho, hidden in the walls very quickly, before that occupancy permit. And I was a contractor a long time, I've seen a lot, like Fry Island, I've seen some crazy, crazy stuff.
They have inspections.
Because they did not have inspections.
So the, the problem is, is we can't legally enforce state code right now, because we haven't adopted it. So if, if we're going to enforce state code, then we have to go to vote again and decide to adopt enforcement. As it stands right now, we're not losing anything, because we're already not enforcing state code.
Does that mean we have no building code, and no building standards?
That's the giant gray area throughout this entire thing. So we either need to adopt it or not adopt it.
Because in section two of section nine, you say we're not gonna enforce MUBIC, but then the second one's number C, and I don't know where number B goes to, it says the town will not adopt or enforce any other alternative building code standard.
That's right, that's state law.
So we're not gonna have any standards for building codes?
We can't under state law. State law states that you cannot enforce any code other than state code.
Other than MUBIC.
But towns under four thousand are not required to enforce state code, and to do so must require the act ordinance.
You don't have to follow any national building code?
Nope.
It's in state law.
That's Tuesday.
Now, what is, now what is the, the life safety code stuff, though? That is another thing.
That's under a different, that's through the Fire Marshal's, and that's the occupancy, those are the inspections that you get to make sure your buildings aren't gonna fall over.
Right, so there, there's still some inspections, that's what people should understand.
It's the same thing we're doing right now.
Right.
We're just putting it in black and white, so we have something to follow.
So currently, we don't follow this MUBIC thing, and this, I just gotta put it in terms like in ground. So currently, we don't follow MUBIC. If we say yes to adopt it, we're putting in writing that we're not following MUBIC. Is that, am I right?
Yes. Yes to adopt, well, the, the vote is whether or not we adopt MUBIC.
Okay.
So the vote is just to accept the wording in our ordinance that says we are not currently, because there is no wording. Does that make more sense?
By saying you're not adopting it, you're making the decision not to adopt it, which is just the opposite of the adopt vote.
Right, but it also...
What MUBIC are not gonna be doing.
So when we get a new code enforcement officer, he's going to look through the ordinance, he's going to see we have not adopted to enforce MUBIC, so he's not going to enforce it.
Okay.
Whether it's in there or not, that just clarifies it for him. So you could go in, decide to adopt, to enforce MUBIC, and change that, but I'm just trying to put it in black and white where there's so much confusion.
Okay.
But this also says that we will never, ever adopt any construction standards.
Well, from my understanding...
Says it right here in black and red.
What, what line item does it say, never, never?
Section nine, section two of section nine, number C.
Are you in the fire one or the MUBIC?
I don't know, I'm so confused. Let's go. Talking about building codes.
You're looking at the town copy, right?
Says, "Perpetual local MUBIC enforcement. The town shall not adopt or enforce any alternative building code or local construction standard in place of MUBIC." That says that we won't have any construction standard that would conflict with or is in MUBIC itself.
Right, so...
Anything.
As it stands right now, you can't enforce anything other than MUBIC, and we have not adopted to enforce MUBIC. So there is no inspections to do other than the occupancy permit, life safety stuff, with the Fire Marshal.
Yes, but this says in the future, we will not have any standards that we will adopt any new standards.
What means that on?
And you would have to continue following of the life safety.
Because what that's saying is, that the MUBIC is the only code law, so you can't grab a code from Washington State or something, and all of a sudden start using that as your code.
Sure.
So what that's saying is, that, that's state rules, you can't use another state, another jurisdiction's rules.
Or the immigration.
That's just reconfirming what the state already says, that you have to use the same.
Right, but this says, except if, we shall not adopt any, it says, six months from now the town shall not adopt any.
Yeah, any, how the...
Any or never, basically.
The town, the town can later on decide to adopt.
It says, it says shall not. Shall means there's no if, and or, but you shall not do it.
Under section...
Anything other than the MUBIC.
If you go under, on fifty, fifty six, yeah, section two, the town, under section two, this is what you're looking at, Jim, right? The town shall not adopt or enforce any alternative building code or local construction standard in place of MUBIC? Is that what you're looking at?
Yes.
Right, so that's, that's state law, it has to say that. If, if we want to follow state law, we shall not enforce, that is how it's written in state law, any code other than MUBIC.
So is life safety done away with, is that...
That's a whole separate, separate rule.
The town could change its...
That's what we were, okay.
All right.
That would require repealing ordinance, and they're coming up with a new one.
All right, one at a time. So, yeah, I mean, what they're saying here in that wording, Jim, is I have seen it listed like that under, what is it, is it thirty-eight or twenty-eight? I don't remember. But it is, let's, shall, shall not adopt, so that, that wording is not kinda...
In place of MUBIC.
Right.
That states that you could enforce MUBIC if you so choose, but we have not.
Yeah, you could change the ordinance next year, because they now have it enforceable.
We can enforce MUBIC, but still you can't...
But you shall not, sorry.
Something other than...
Some places, the international state building code standards.
Let me ask something else if I can. Section four of section nine, it says, "The CEO position may be part-time or fulfilled through interlo, interlocal agreement." What does that mean? Is it ten hours a week, a hundred hours a month, thirty-eight hours a month or week? What, what, what does it mean? Can it be a full-time position?
Right, I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
You want me to answer?
How did you expect me to vote?
So, just like you just said, words are important, and shall means no if, answer buts, but may, on the other hand, means if, answer buts. And it says, "The CEO position may be part-time or fulfilled through interlocal agreement." It's leaving it open to full-time, part-time, or interlocal agreement.
Could be full-time.
So it could be a full-time, how CEOs will play some...
Could be a planning board.
No.
Could be.
Not, if we're seeing that.
Right, so in that wording, that would leave it up to the, the way we're trying to do things now, which is a split, I would think.
My question is, why would you even include it?
What is?
That, that section, that comment about the part-time code.
It was part of the...
It could be full-time, it could be part-time, it could be no time, it could be whatever. Why even include it?
It was part of the petition, and that's what people signed for, and that's what we're putting forward.
Okay.
Seems to me we're gonna be voting on this in November. It's already been mentioned, the government is gonna sign something in, that we're gonna have to redo it all anyway. So if we're gonna have to redo it anyway in 2026, we're spinning our wheels with shells and bots and what-ifs, and I learned a long time ago that if you don't understand a question on the ballot, vote no, 'cause if you vote yes, it's going into effect. If you don't understand it, vote no. And I'll bring up the guy that told me that, he was my father, and he was a very simple, hard-working man, but if you don't understand it, vote no, and let it rehash, and in 2026, it's gonna have to be rehashed.
My problem is, I don't know what I'm voting on right now, so I hope to...
Follow my father's advice?
I believe he was. Wise man.
He was.
Bryce?
I think the purpose of a public hearing is so that you do understand.
Well, I got this paperwork yesterday, between a medical appointment in Farmington, driving to another medical appointment in, in Boston, and I haven't had a chance to review it, read it, or anything.
They hand-delivered the stuff to your house and doomed.
Same stuff?
Same stuff.
Well, then I probably reviewed it then.
You haven't...
But I haven't reviewed this, but I just got it yesterday.
Do we have any more discussion on the Development Standards Ordinance Amendments? Not seeing any, we're gonna move on to repeal special amusement ordinance. We had some discussion a while back about switching to a policy, and that's pretty much what this is. We'd like to move forward with repealing this and move on to just having a town policy in the future.
So will that'll get rid of those ordinance?
Yes. The, yes, the special amusement ordinance.
Do we have a policy written up yet?
No. Not the one that I've renewed, so, um... Bill, you had...
No.
Huh?
They never wrote the question.
Okay.
I didn't know if we had a policy. It's the same thing with other things.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't drafted anything as far as policies. It was just recommended that these ordinances are cumbersome, and it'd be easier to go with just drafting some policies in the future.
So what happens with the policy? What happens with the policies, does that get voted on also, or is that just, you got to call it, or does it affect?
No, that's more of just a, this could develop, just...
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct, Dana. Policies are approved by the select board.
That's our thought.
Yeah.
So that doesn't...
Both of these ordinances require public hearings, votes by the select board, it's very luxurious for...
No, no, I'm, I'm all for you. I wanted to make sure I had a clear way in.
So would we peel this, and we don't have a policy in place, what are gonna be the guidelines for something that does come up in between the process of no ordinance and a policy?
You know, that's a good question.
I think they should stay, I think they should stay in effect until there is a policy.
What was that?
My hope is to have drafts very, pretty quickly, because they're very, very simple, so...
So in the meantime, we can leave this in effect until the policies are voted on by the board.
And, and quite frankly, these are not major, major issues in town. We do not have food trucks lining up around the block, we do not have big amusement parties going on with live music, it's very rare that we even have it, so I don't think we're gonna have a problem between now and the time we have to draft policies.
Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
It's a fair question, I, I, that's the best answer I can give you. Yes, Jim?
If I remember correctly, when we approved these, proposed them, but approved these, we did not realize that we could have a policy, that we felt that we only had, could only do it by virtue of orders. And the ordinances are kind of cumbersome to people, so I, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Jim.
Does this require a motion?
No, this is just a public hearing, a commission, we've already made the motion. So we've kinda discussed, we mixed in the vote, it's the same idea with both of those. Do we have any further discussion for this public hearing? I'm not seeing any, then I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. Thank you, everybody, for your participation, Darnett. We have no minutes, right? I didn't see any, so we have no minutes. We're gonna move right on to new business. This involves, I was the one that made the motion, right? So I have to... I would like to rescind my motion to approve the warrant for November, what, fifth? What's it, fourth? November fourth. You should be, you should just have to rescind that motion, right, and then we'll approve it. Do I have a second?
What are you, what, what is the motion?
So what I'm doing is, I'm, I'm making the motion to rescind the approval of the warrant that we voted on a couple of, about four weeks ago. And the main reason that I'm asking to rescind this is because we're, we want to pull off the cannabis ordinance from the vote, because it's just, it's not ready yet, and we feel it'd be best to, to have more time to work on it, as opposed to putting out an ordinance that isn't a hundred percent ready.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Three in favor? Any opposed? I'm staying, you want to stay in? Okay. Up next, we have...
So then you need to approve a new warrant that eliminated the cannabis ordinance.
You gave us a new copy of the term, all right? 'Cause I'm gonna keep track, so, there it is. I am moved to approve the warrant for November fourth.
The revised?
The revised warrant for November fourth.
I second.
All those in favor? Men opposed? So... All right, let's carry that. Up next, we have Jade...
Kucher.
Kucher, all right, good. Center for Health Improvement.
Hello, my name is Jade Kucher, I work for Healthy Community Coalition, this is my manager, Kat Whitby. So tonight, I wanted to present on the Drug-Free Communities Grant that the Spruce Mountain School District was awarded. So, on the table, there was a one-figure, if anybody didn't get the one-figure about the grant, I could have more copies. So the goal of this presentation is for the select board, the town manager, and you all here that are present to understand what the Drug-Free Communities Grant and the purpose of this. So with that grant, we have twelve sectors, which we came up with the name Greater Franklin Prevention Alliance, and this logo was actually created by a member of the Spruce Mountain High School Youth League that I brought, so it has a phoenix. I don't know if you can see the color, but the phoenix is actually like a forest green. So we're gonna talk about the programs and the services that are happening, some of it already has happened, so, and then we want you to understand how US community members can help with this grant.
Okay, so just a little history about the grant. So the Drug-Free Communities Grant, those are managed through a partnership between the Office of National Drug Control Policy and the CDC. The DFC program provides grants to community coalitions to reduce local youth substance use, community coalitions that does Healthy Community Coalition, we're from today. So more than seven hundred and fifty community coalitions across the country receive this funding, and it's to strengthen collaboration among local partners and create an infrastructure that reduces youth substance use. So specifically, Healthy Community Coalition and the Spruce Mountain School District last year partnered to apply for this DFC grant for the Jay Livermore and Loma Falls communities. And so in October, we were awarded a five-year grant, it's on six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars total, split over that five-year period, and it is to support, to prevent substance use, whistle on me. So the, really, the two main goals of this funding is to establish and strengthen collaboration, and then to reduce substance use among youth. And you can see that through... And you can see that three communities is what we chose, because that is what the school district serves. We kind of serve as that fiscal agent for the school district.
So again, the key twelve sectors we have, we have members from the school district that are the social worker, the superintendent attends when he's available. We have a representative from the AYS. We have a representative from the local church. Law enforcement. We have Berry Fruit Farm is a local business that has joined our coalition as well to help this effort. St. Rose Church, the J. Police, and Spruce Mountain Pharmacy are huge partners with this grant. They have shown up from the start, from the go, word go, and they have continued to show up to every meeting. Within this grant, I run the Maine Youth Leaders, which is 10 to 15 students. We meet once a week at the school. And our goal is to do some projects that help better the school. So we have this great project called the Yellow Tulip. This one is, hits home with me, because it's trying to help reduce stigma around mental health. So this is a national project that actually started in Maine. And if you guys drive by the school, we have Rototail A Ribbon. That is where we plan on planting 500 tulips. And then we have the Photo Boys Project. This project, the students are really excited for it, because they have a voice, they matter. So one of the topics for this is what is a positive thing in your community? So the students may go around and take a picture of the rec field, because it's a place where they can practice sports, or a lot of the students say they're gonna go take a picture of Dunkin' Donuts, because that keeps them fueled for school. So this is another project that we're starting.
So both the mission and vision statement were agreed upon by the coalition members that you talked about, those twelve sectors and some additional members that are able to come. So the real mission of this program is we are a coalition of local parents, teachers, and community leaders collaborating to prevent youth substance use through education and empowerment to build strong, healthier futures for the families of J. Livermore and Livermore Falls. And to go along with that, that vision statement is we envision a future where youth in J. Livermore and Livermore Falls grow up with the support, tools, and confidence they need to make healthy choices and lead positive lives. Our coalition is working to build a community where substance use is no longer the norm, rather it's where families, schools, and neighbors come together to create strong relationships and still hope and empower the next generation to thrive. So when we first applied for this grant, these are just some data trends. These are Franklin County specific, they are not just to this community. But these were kind of some data trends that we used to really kind of show why we need this programming, you know, why we need the support. So we use the Maine Integrated Youth Health Survey. If any of you are not familiar with that, that is a state administered survey every two years. And we have really high response rates in this county, which is super great. So according to the 2023 results, 36% of high school students reported use of alcohol, 20% reported use of cannabis, and 34% reported the use of vaping. Additionally, you can kind of see below, so two out of three students, and this is also high school, reported the use of cannabis once or twice a week. And they felt that it posed no risk to their health. So that kind of really shows their perceived threat, which is very low. And then additionally, one out of four students reported that they believe that their parents feel that it would not be wrong to use cannabis. And that's another factor that we look at is, you know, parental supervision and kind of their influence on the youth as well.
I guess I'll do this license, it's about me. So my name is Jade Kucher. I'm the program coordinator that sits on this grant. For those of you that don't know, I grew up in this community. So I was extremely excited when I got the promotion to be the program coordinator on the grant, because just building off from when I grew up here to make this community a stronger place, and it comes from, you know, I had one kid say to me, well, it can't just come from us kids, it has to come from the adults too. And I just like, that sat with me, so that's why I was, you know, kind of honored to do this. So I'm currently in the school four days a week. High school and middle school. I'm there from, I try to be there, from 7:30 to 3:00. And I have open, open door, like, policy. So students come in and see me. If they got caught vaping or using any other substance, drinking, they get the choice. They either serve five days in-school suspension and do a evidence-based program with me, or they get 10 days off school suspension. So far, I have done eight students, and out of eight of those students, four of them have reported that they have reduced use or quit, whether it was drinking or substance use. So the school-based work, we do multiple different evidence-based programs. The one I do is a Stanford curriculum, and then I also do a Catch My Breath curriculum, which is tobacco and substance use prevention classes, where the kids learn refusal skills. They learn about making the right decisions. So this is me and my coworkers, we went on a back-to-school barbecue slash community resource fair, because kids and parents both reported, we don't know what we have for resources in our community. So that's why we did this. We had 28 local businesses donate raffle items. So when families came in, they went down, saw all their teachers and the resources, and then we drew names for the raffles. So I don't know if any of you remember the flyer going around about the sledding party that we had over at the ski slope. It was like, probably negative 10 degrees out, and we still had 135 people attend. We've also hosted parent safety nights in partnership with Franklin County Sheriff's Office. This was to make parents more aware of what's going on in the internet world. Students are reporting high rates of bullying through Snapchat, Instagram, all the other social media accounts out there. So how can you guys get involved, right? Part of those twelve sectors, we have one sector that is actually open, so if any of you are interested, I do have business cards. Coming to one meeting a month for an hour and being a voice, right, having a voice. You know, a parent said to me one day, well, if I sit on there, my kid's gonna think that I'm telling that everybody about why they complained to me. I was like, no, you can take that, your child's voice, and bring it to the table on how we can help make the community stronger. And then engage in local, in the community. So like the Yellow Tulip project, we're gonna plant the bulbs, and then when they come up in May, we're gonna do a community event. So that's where you all could show up and support these youth. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you guys have like flyers or anything, or do they have local businesses and stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have flyer for events. And we have also talked about, so you saw the logo at the beginning, that kind of, that's representation, right, of that, that twelve-sector coalition, those students. We are exploring the idea of kind of getting those stickers and putting it in local businesses and places, just to kind of show the support for this work happening in our school and community. Because the biggest really kind of purpose of this programming, it's, it's school-based and it's community-based. So you know, you can't do one without the other, and that's why, you know, we're very grateful to be here today, to just kind of share about this work and kind of get the word out for everyone and invite you all to contribute and just kind of enjoy it as well.
And if you can't come to like every meeting, that's fine. If you wanna just chill up, hear what we have to say, and then you have interest, you can just, I have business cards here, and I can send you an email and an invite.
Did you mention when the meetings were? I saw one-hour meeting monthly, but.
Yeah, so we try to do it the second Tuesday of every month.
What time?
From three to four. So like November's meeting, we moved, because it was Veterans Day. So that one's the 18th, but we try to keep that second Tuesday of the month.
And it's always at the high school?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and the, and the time?
Three to four.
Three to four.
And these services you provide are completely covered, cost-covered by the grant?
Yes, yeah, good question. So I mentioned, so it's five years, it's total 625, so it's, it comes out to $125,000 a year. With grant funding, obviously, you know, you're kind of told what's been, all that funding, the only staff time that HCC uses is what goes to Jade's time, she's in the school four days a week. Otherwise, the funds go to, we have stipends for youth to participate, we have funds for community events, kind of, it all goes back into the community to support the programming.
Oh, just a curious, so we have a roomful of parents and grandparents here. When the, when kids are getting into substances, why do they say they're doing it? Do they confide in you?
Yeah, so the ones that have, you know, been open and honest about it are, you know, I found this at home, and I was like, what is this? You know, so then they did their research, as they tell me. I go home, look it up on my laptop or my phone, and then I give it a try. Some of them are saying it helps with my anxiety, and then there's a lot of peer pressure happening, is what the students have reported to me anyway. Yeah.
As someone that owns a cannabis business, it would be good to reach out to all six of us to get those flyers in there, because those parents are living and laying on the counter, ought to have a clue. And you just, I mean, think common sense, but.
Oh, I agree, yeah.
I'd be, I'd be happy to put them in my shop, anyway, so.
Yeah, that's wonderful, and we appreciate that, and we have built relationships with other retailers, we have, you know, like safe storage resources and things like that. To all kind of, right, just be responsible, that's really what we're doing.
And a lot of the students are like, I feel personally, I mean, I've only been doing this for a little less than a year, but like, I go to the middle school, and I go sit and have lunch with them. I mean, I don't eat lunch with them, but like, I sit and talk with them and kind of hear their feedback, right? I found it very interesting, at the middle school level, they thought that 90, excuse me, 8% of high school students faked. So I said, what makes you think that? And they said, well, they're older, they're cooler, and they experiment more. So I found that very interesting. So I'm working with the social worker at the middle school and the high school to kind of work through some of those barriers that we're having when it comes to communication with the kids and why they feel that way.
Do you, does your course ever invite people that are recovered addicts to talk? I know there's a couple of, there's a home in Winthrop, and they go around to churches and other things and talk to people and tell their stories. Some of it needs to be toned down for kids, but it's the facts, it's the reality of it, you know?
So we're actually, the youth group is in the process of planning a youth summit that we are hoping to have at the high school. And that's one of the topics that they actually brought up, is Jade, can you find me somebody in recovery? We wanna hear their story.
The, in Winthrop?
Teen Challenge.
Teen Challenge is a great resource. The guys there are in a 12-month program, and once they've completed enough of it, they go out and start talking. And their stories are pretty rough, you know, but I think it's, you know, maybe that's something you could reach out to that would be friendly.
I appreciate it, and I know the school's social workers do, they have connections. They just had a lady come in and talk about her mental health struggles and what it led to, and then her recovery through that process. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, then there's another thing called, no, Celebrate Recovery, that a lot of churches doing stuff, where people come in and tell their stories and things. You know, I know Victory Christian in Livermore does a big thing. If you ever think of reaching out to them, they might be your resource to just, we're gonna throw that out there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you all for your time, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Jade?
Yeah.
I thought you were named, but.
Who is? I'm Kat. Kat Whitney.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Kat's with a K, not a C.
Up next, we have cemetery mowing bids. Do we get them? One and only? All right. It's not pretty anymore. All right. Little Falls Subboard, this is sealed. There's, there's a back. Right there. Having carefully examined the form of contract, general conditions, and specifications for the town of Livermore Falls mowing work, we, the, I propose to furnish all labor equipment and materials as outlined in the specifications for 2026 mowing, $4,900, 2027 mowing, $5,000, and 2028 mowing, $5,100. Alicia Thurston, contractor Claybrook Landscaping, Livermore Falls, Maine. Who was doing it last year? There wasn't?
Uh, S, uh, SNR. SNR?
They didn't want to bid this year? They didn't? How much was it last year? Was it 37?
Forty-six.
Was it 40? All right. So understandably, it's going up, labor's going up.
I'd like to move that we accept the bid from Claybrook Landscaping for the amounts that they have listed.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor? All right, congratulations to Claybrook Landscaping. Do you need to sign this anywhere, or do you just want this back?
Yeah, you have to sign it somewhere on there.
Somewhere.
I have all kinds of stuff you need to sign.
Oh, goodness. All right. Up next, we have approval of special town meeting warrants.
Is that the one for the 13?
I think that's the one you have in your hand. There was question as to whether or not this space would be large enough. So Doris put her thinking cap on and reached out to the Legion. They are not available, but the VFW is. And she actually went up and looked at the library's auditorium today, but I just don't think it's quite handicap accessible in the event. We have somebody in a chair with mobility issues, so.
And we do have a.
Why aren't we looking at the fire department? That's what we've done before.
It's pretty small.
Really, you'd have to open up the bays if you're gonna do that.
And I don't think doing it again at the high school gym is a good idea. The echo factor in there is outrageous.
What about, I don't, I haven't been in there since, it's not Murray Hall, but mainland, do they have a auditorium there?
Not anymore.
They have a small.
It's all office space now.
When you say the VFW, the one up, up on Jewel Street, is the interior of that smaller than the fire department? The place never struck me as being very big.
No, but it's just, it's laid out different, it's not, it's not long and narrow and concrete.
And there's a bar.
Which may be available after.
Way after. Is it, so are they okay with us using that?
Yeah. I spoke to Mike Willett today. I said, I tried for the Legion first, and it's not available on the 13th. It's available on the 10th and the 12th, but not the 13th.
But, and you said it is handicap accessible?
It is, yeah. The VFW is, yes.
Is there a fee?
I'm not sure, I didn't even, didn't even ask it. I would run it by you guys first.
I make a motion, we consider the VFW for the November 13th town meeting with the provision they have a reasonable rental fee, if they have any.
I second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving use the VFW on Jewel Street? Was it Jewel Street? On Jewel Street for the November 13th town warrant vote at, what do you want, did we say, 6:00 P.M.? At 6:00 P.M. All those in favor? Hold up, standing. Hold up, standing. So, I'm going to read the warrant that we're going to be proposing. I'm going to skip down to Article Two. To see if the town will vote to approve a capital improvement project consisting of the planning, engineering, design, permitting, construction, reconstruction, replacement, or improvement of sewer infrastructure on a section of Route seventeen from Chai Corner to the intersection of Main and Church Street in Livermore Falls. Appropriate, uh, appropriate the sum of two point, two million three hundred and fifty-one dollars to fund the project. Authorize the select board to negotiate and enter into an agreement to borrow on behalf of the town an amount not to exceed two million three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to finance all or a portion of the cost of the project, and to issue therefore one or more general obligation bonds and notes in anticipation thereof in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed two million three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and delegate to the select board chair and treasurer the discretion, decision of, decision to fix the dates, maturities, denominations, interest rates, and other details of such borrowing, including the manner of borrowing and redemption, with or without premium. Now, the bonds and notes to be issued will have a maximum principal amount of two point three five one million dollars. The total estimated debt service is four million two hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-four cents, of which principal is two million three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, an estimated interest rate at four percent over thirty years is one million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. When money is borrowed by issuing bonds, the town must repay not only the principal amount of the bonds, but also interest on the bonds. The amount of interest to be paid will vary depending upon the rate of interest and years to maturity at the time of issue.
So this is what we, we talked about, um, not included in here, but is part of this is the up to one million dollars of principal to approve the, the S R F program.
Did we need to include in this the repayment with the, the lawyer said we didn't need to include that part? So I moved to set to approve the town, uh, warrant for November thirteenth at six P M, as read.
Yeah, I, I got a question.
Which one?
Uh, where it says select board chair and treasurer. Would that be okay if we were under the administrative assistant setup? But I do think that should be town manager, treasurer, not select board chair.
That's what he recommended. Because of the attorney, the bond attorney that, that wrote this article.
Does he know we have a town manager, not an administrative assistant?
He does, yeah. Because that's the way the bonds are, are issued, is to the board. The board and the treasurer. I believe the other, uh, financial statements said the same thing that we approved for the fire stations.
Because I suppose required to sign the one last to get to, so. The chair is.
Then I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four in favor, none opposed. So we will see everybody on the thirteenth. Up next, we have warrants, abatements, deeds, and quit claims. We get a bunch of them, so I'm going to make this simple tonight. I may move to approve payroll warrant seven point one, general fund warrant seven point two.
I second.
All those in favor? Four in favor? Now, can you fill me in on these abatements, Carrie? I probably should have the paperwork, but I'm not familiar with them.
So the sewer abatements are corrections that needed to be made.
Yeah.
So the abatements, um, any, I did give you one of this with each one. The majority of them, looking at this, is they had a leak. Um, and the leak was probably on the ground, wasn't, didn't go down into our sewer system. There was one of them, I don't know where it is, just going off the top of my head, I made a bill and error, an error. Um, and I can read them for you if you need to. Oh, here it is, the first one. I made a bill and error on the billing account, the consumption for the year is forty-eight cubic feet, not eighty-eight cubic feet. So it was a typo when I was typing it in. Um, but the others have to do with leaks, um, and that's what the corrections are for. On account one oh five, um, it is an abatement of one thousand seventy-two dollars and fifty cents. The six thousand six hundred and sixty-three that is on the public hearing paperwork is that's what we want to bring the bill from, six thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars down to five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. So that's asking of abatement of one thousand seventy-two dollars and fifty cents.
Fifty cents, is that right?
Yes.
And that was the building that burnt that the, uh, American Legion now has?
No, that's eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. Right street, wrong number.
I would like to move that we abate the amounts as presented, especially since they're in, in the sewer rate users' favor. Account seven one nine, account six nine seven, account three two one, account one oh five, and account four twenty-nine.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Favor, none opposed? Now, what about, we have real estate account twenty-one oh nine, two thousand. Which one is that?
So this is for a property owner that was assessed for a well in a subject that is not on the property, so. The abatement amount is two hundred and three dollars and twenty cents.
I move to abate account twenty-one oh nine in the amount of two hundred and three dollars and twenty cents.
I second.
All those in favor?
I abstain.
Everyone's going to go abstaining. Next, we have personal property abatements. Account number fifty-two.
So there is no personal property on this.
Okay. So, you just want to, is it just a misjudge?
And actually, the other, the other three, um, is actually an abatement for three years for a similar situation. The difference with that is it was actually a piece of leased equipment. So, um, we were assessing personal property tax to both the leased, person that's leasing it and the leasing company. This abates it to the leasing company. The person has the property.
I make a motion, we abate account fifty-two, account three oh nine, and supplement fifty-nine as they're explained in this paper here.
I second.
All those in favor? All in favor? Next, we have board discussion.
I have two things, and I'll be brief. I was, I'm wondering if the term or the title code enforcement officer is written in stone? Or if it could be changed? I think that the, the term code enforcement officer has a rather heavy Big Brother tone to it. I was thinking, I was thinking code compliance officer, or code compliance coordinator. It's, just sounds friendlier and more amicable than code enforcement officer. And the other thing is, I'm not sure if people heard it last week when Chief Guptel presented, when the fire department presented us with these pictures of the fire truck that we've approved, that he said that Captain Ortiz went to Pennsylvania. That's why we have such incredible photographs of it. He went and checked it out himself on his own time and his own dime, and I would like the minutes to reflect that the board is thankful for his going above and beyond in the service of the fire department and the town. That's as brief as I get.
I don't know. Code enforcement's written everywhere, I don't know if you can get away with changing that or not.
I think it's a state title.
But it's, I like, I understand what your sentiment is.
Think about it, CEO everywhere else in the world is chief executive officer, which would be our town manager.
Right.
But here, it's code enforcement officer, and I just think it should have a different title so they're not confused.
I guess it can be researched.
I'm also. All right, managers discussion.
Uh, just a few things, uh, I'll start with the bad news first, the deal on the church fell through. Not, not unsurprisingly. A gentleman just said he just couldn't get anybody to give him prices on the demolition, so. Heard that from other, other individuals as well, and the ones that had were seeing prices that's been, um, rather high. So, I, uh, today actually submitted a brownfield site assessment application to Abcolor, and we may have had them take it down ourselves through the brownfields program. So we'll, we'll see where it goes from there, so. Um, the couple bits of good news, uh, we've received a couple more grants. Uh, we received an MMA safety grant for backup hammers for four of the public works trucks in the amount of one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And we also have been approved for training funds through the Alphon Center for the Advancement of Needful Force. And that was so far of four hundred and twenty-five dollars. What they do is they reimburse the town half of training costs, up to twelve hundred dollars per employee, per year. It's a nice, nice program, so. That's it.
What, can you, can you just give me, what is the brownfield? I'm not familiar with that.
It's contaminated site, it's a cleanup.
Well, hopefully something comes of it, it's been a, been a very trying road journey, but a lot of work's gone into it on your end and Kenny's end. Look forward to what you find out.
Yeah, me too.
All right, department head discussion. Bill?
We need a couple new garage doors. We have one that is broke and unable to be fixed. And we have another one that we would not even do maintenance on because he feels it is unsafe. So last year budget line, we asked for fifteen thousand dollars to replace two of the doors. That kind of got thrown out. Well, we're kind of at the point, we've got to do something, or we're going to have two bays that we cannot use, and they are our two work bays. So the price from last year when we got budget numbers, it's gone up a hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. So it's fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
Does this replace both of them?
To replace two of them. And next year, he said, plan on, you're going to have to replace two more. And I've got the fifth door, he's, it looks like we're getting another three or four years out of that. I've been with the town for twenty years, those doors have been in that long, and I can't even guess on what year they were put in.
Is, are the tracks going bad on them?
The tracks have gone bad, the panels, uh, rusted out, uh, there's no more. We've had two of the panels replaced back in two thousand twelve, I believe, and they just rotted out.
And could this be considered a capital project expense?
We do have about eighty-one thousand dollars or so in the capital reserve account.
I would like to move that we approve the fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents to replace the two bay board, the two bay doors that, like, looking at this, are just awful.
I'll second it. All those in favor? That wasn't on the agenda tonight, but we've been talking about this for a while, so.
We've gone off like five or six years, been asking for, replace a few doors at a time, so we've kind of come to the end.
I'm opposed to. We appreciate your pushing it as long as you can.
Uh, the other thing I have is, we have the back body on the two thousand fifteen Ford pickup that is starting to rust, and so we've been looking at aluminum flat bed bodies to put on. Uh, I've got prices from four thousand to sixty-five hundred dollars on aluminum eight-four flat bed body. I would like to, um, the six thousand dollar one has a limited lifetime warranty, the four thousand dollar one has a one-year warranty. My plan is if we buy aluminum body, it will go on whatever we get for the next truck. This truck still runs good, goes good, it's just starting to show its age of what we used it for. The four thousand dollar body is a Down Easter. The other one is an Alcon through Mesa Truck, uh, and steel bodies are running right around thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred dollars for a steel body. So I'd rather have aluminum one, I think it would last the town a lot longer, would be more versatile for us.
What's the main difference between these prices that you're giving us?
The one, uh, to the Alcon body, the cross members are twelve inch on sound versus sixteen. It does come with a little bigger headboard. They got all kinds of options for what we need. The biggest thing is the limited lifetime warranty, that's pretty much, if you draw something on it that was way too heavy and broke it, you own it. You know, but if it's any crap show up or anything like that, they take care of it. The other one, uh, it's just got one year, they just do, it might get one-year warranty, and that's that.
Okay, so if any, just from wear and tear, though, but probably not, well, it's a moment, it shouldn't corrode for a long, long, long time.
And that money could come out of the equipment reserve account.
What is a, just out of curiosity, what's a regular bed running these days? Just to get, it's got, it's got, it's got a, just a regular.
It's got a regular, it's an eight-four bed, it does have a lift gate, but that's getting, uh, rotted out, tender. Next year, I could go for another grant, I got that lift gate through the grant program, MMA. Uh, I think I've gotten, what, three or four lift gates through that grant. So I mean, next year, we could go for a new grant for a lift gate to put on the back. It would be a lot more convenient with that Harpersander in the back to have a flat bed than the pickup body. Um, it's hard to carry, bags of calcium or anything like that with that sander in the back in the wintertime.
You'd be able to just set it alongside it, or as opposed?
Yeah, we make up our own sideboards, all that stuff for it.
Does that come with the pegs and stuff?
It comes with the pockets in there for the sideboards.
So you just make some and pull them right off?
Yeah. That aluminum one that's on the sewer apartment truck, uh, that's, guessing that aluminum body's been on that Dodge down here for at least ten, ten, twelve years, and that still looks like it did the day they picked it up. for at least 10, 10, 12 years, and that still looks like it did the day they picked it up.
Well, you're usually pretty good about when you come to us with stock, Bill, so I'll move that we spend up to $6,500 on a new bed for the Ford pickup. It is for the Ford, right?
To come out.
To come out of the, which one are we taking out of the cap?
Equipment reserve.
Equipment reserve account, thank you. To come out of the equipment reserve account.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, I got, thank you very much.
We have, yeah, man, you have anything else for us? Doors.
Trunketry is coming right up, October 31st, right out here in the parking lot. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. And always a good time, I welcome any one of you to come out, all of you to come out. You can decorate your trunk, if you don't want to do that, you can set up a little table. You can just come and watch everybody. The kids have a ball, so do the adults. Absentee ballots are still available. They are available until October 30th, 5:00 PM. If you want it, please let us know. And just letting you know that we'll be wrapping up the community garden this week, hopefully. I feel like it was a really good success. A lot of people have been down and around there. Lot of nice feedback from it. And I welcome you to join next year. We'll have a committee going, and I just want to get it going. I kind of needed to get my feet wet this year on that and kind of see what we were doing. But next year there'll be a committee and hopefully a little bit more to go on, go with and eat.
Awesome, thank you for that. I guess I'd like to make the note on the absentee ballots, they are still going to reflect the original, the original wording with the canvas ordinance, but those are simply will not be counted as how we're gonna handle that. The ballots will be counted, just the tally for the canvas ordinance.
That one question.
That one question, so. All right. Up next we have public comment. I would like to just take a quick look at the sign in sheets, make sure we have Susan Wilkins.
I wasn't able to stay for the end of the last meeting, but I wanted to ask the selectmen to put a policy in place for how to fill a position on the school board if there's a resignation. I think we ought to have a set policy. My, my opinion is that the next person in line that got the most votes should be asked. And if they don't want to, then it should be opened up for people that are interested. But I think it should be a policy, because I don't think, I think this could happen again. And I don't think having the whims of whoever happens to be on the school board at the time to make the decision, I think it should be a policy in place, and that's, the policy should be followed. And I have another question. How many, on any given lot, how many dwellings can you have people living in? Is there a designated, like say if you have a home, can you have campers? I have several in the neighborhood, they are remodeling storage sheds to make living quarters. Yes, more than one on my road. And I'm just wondering where they're gonna get their electrical? Are they gonna run a generator all day? Noise, I've already got noise. What are they gonna be, their bathroom facilities? I know we don't have a CE, oh, code, code clarifier or whatever. I agree with you, but I just, is there anything that can be done? I mean, I'm looking at somebody right on my fence line that's gonna be living in a storage shed. They've insulated, they've sheet rocked, and they moved a mattress in.
Call the ADU.
With what?
The governor assigned law last.
Without any water or sewer facilities?
She didn't specify, she said that everybody can do it. Maybe it needs some occupancy permit, right?
Excuse me?
An occupancy permit?
That's what I'm wondering, if we don't have anybody to do those inspections, how are you gonna find out? That there's three trailers, three campers on somebody's property that people are living in? Don't we have a, a standard, a set standard for living conditions?
Tim, what is the name of that one? It's one, it's state law.
First thing is you have to have, it's gotta be a certain size. It can't be, it can't be under 190 square feet.
What's a 10 by 12, 120? Now, so that's, I mean, that's a storage shed.
The biggest thing is subsurface water. It has to be, it has to have a subject system.
So who's gonna, who's gonna want into that?
Let's say there's a house existing on the property, and it's a three bedroom home. Built, the system is built for a three bedroom home.
Well, this one's in violation of the sewer. They had a failed sewer and they.
Oh, okay.
They drew.
But other than that, not much we can do right now.
A lot of that will have to fall back on, once we have the CEO, but like Gail was mentioning, the ADU makes it difficult the way the things are signed in to allow, you know, more, more dwellings on a piece of property.
It's gonna get worse.
We've gotta comply with subsurface.
Subsurface, yeah.
You can't just, it has to be inspected. It's gotta be at a certain height area, a certain size. And I think we go up to 800 square feet, go from 190 to 800 square feet for an ADU.
Well, like I said, this one's a 10 by 12 storage shed.
Don't quote me, but I believe it's from 190 square feet to 800 is considered a high home. But it still has, I mean, unless they put in, I'm dealing with one in Falmouth right now. And it's, what they did to get around it is they put in a composting toilet. And they've got a, what they call aerobic digestive for the gray water.
Is there anything in that that says it has to be so far from somebody's property line?
Well, 10 feet, 10 feet is said back in the Falls.
Well, I don't think this is even 10 feet.
Hold on one second. Ernie, you have?
Yeah, I had a question years ago. I was still on the board back then. You had a problem with barking dogs?
Still do.
All right, 'cause I was gonna say, when I go to Rusty Land.
If anything, it's worse.
Really? 'Cause I was gonna say, I, when I go to Rusty Land, I used to hear a dog barking continually. And the last four or five times I've been there, I haven't heard a dog barking. So I was wondering if the situation had.
No, it hasn't improved.
He was just quiet when I was there.
I don't know if they sleep better. For, there was a week that he went away and took some of them with him. So probably, it was the barkers, 'cause I had peace, peace for three days where I had no barking. But it comes and goes, it happens when he's not there, when he's out. And I don't know, I, I'm not a dog whisperer, so I don't know why on certain days they bark all day and why they don't, I don't know that.
I, I just noticed, the times I visited Rusty Land.
Several weeks ago, he was gone and.
Maybe that's when I was there, 'cause I didn't.
But it really hasn't improved.
Thank you.
Could I, I was, over the past three or four years, I've tried to pay attention when I was out the corner. I never really heard anybody, any dog barking, up until three or four weeks ago. And I did hear the dog bark for about at least 20 minutes while I sat there.
Well, it's gone, it can go up to eight hours. It can go up to eight hours.
I'm sure.
And it's at the point where their horse at the end, 'cause they just, they don't stop.
And it was continuous.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there's no, there's no breath intake. I don't know how they do it, but they don't. It's just constant.
Okay. Bryce?
Yeah, just looking at the development standards ordinance here pertaining to what she was saying. And in section five, under two size, the accessory dwelling unit must be at least 190 square feet in size. And it goes on to say we need water and wastewater, so that building.
So who's gonna enforce that?
That would be code enforcement.
So that's hopefully, once we're able to find a, a conversation for that individual.
In the interim, couldn't she contact the state fire marshals or file a report?
I'm sure there's people at the state level you could reach out to.
Seen people do that in other communities where similar situations. You can contact the state fire marshals, and they will take action on stuff like that. Because that's, that's an illegal dwelling, it's fire risk and anything else, on the heating.
Well, that's another thing.
That's what I'm saying, so there's other venues, we don't have a CEO right now, so there are other resources out there to reach out to.
Thank you for pointing that out, Dan. Appreciate it. John?
Just if anyone has any questions about the amendments that the farming, the move back and the life scope, please feel free to reach out, I can chat with you after, or email, or if you want to do it. We can explain any questions, highlight how it evolved, why, I would felt it was important to bring it to the, to the people for the vote. And maybe try and answer any questions you have.
Okay. Do you have a site or anything that you're trying to send people to if you want to share that?
We'll have that, I'll check, yeah.
No. Yours?
John, do you want your phone number shared if anybody called, if they heard it on TV?
Or mine?
Or yours?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Or my email, whatever.
Yeah, you, email and phone number.
Nothing's changed.
No business.
I'll give you one.
Do we have any other public comment, Bill?
Kind of in response to the, this crowded pumping places on the lot, just to, just to want to point out, this new LD 1829 that we're gonna have to get into is we do, the state is forcing us to allow more buildings per lot stance. I mean, you still have to meet sewer requirement, a subsurface disposal and so forth still. But there are gonna be, that's part of the rules that are gonna force, you know. If people want to put up to four houses on a lot, they can. And they're reducing our square footage that we mandate to have for minimum lot sizes. So that's gonna get reduced way down, I think. So I, it, we're gonna have some issues down the road. Not necessarily like that, I mean, that's kind of a, a use, so to speak. But this is just, even if you want to build or build, you can have.
Are they talking about going below 10,000?
What's that?
Are they talking about, 'cause we're at 10,000 in town right now, square feet.
You're talking 5,000, I think.
That's, that's.
Yeah, I, I have, I haven't got into it all yet, but there is, I've got a little something there. It's like, they're gonna, they're trying to go high density on housing this whole.
Was there some talk about height too, as far as how high you can go?
Some, up to 14 more feet or something like that. But I, there's something special about that, yeah. So, yeah, there's some things coming, that's just, everybody might want to be aware of, that's all.
When you have those conversations, please invite them, so I can come listen, and I'd appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
So we're starting, we've been smelling the sewer pretty regularly where we hadn't before. It was just, I had that, and then another thing as well. I'm just curious if there's something going on, like, 'cause we smelled it this evening. And I'm not sure if it was leaking things from the sewer abatements, if that had anything to do with it, or if we're just smelling it more frequently.
I do not have an answer for you on that.
Are you just smelling it in town? Is there a certain area?
You know what tree streets are?
Yes, in the tree streets.
But the leaking is the water leaks itself, it's not the sewer. 'Cause we get the readings from the water department for sewer building.
'Cause it, we've had to, like, in the summer, we had to shut our windows because it was, it was so strong.
It's the affluence coming out of there.
Yeah, we don't have the odor control.
The odor control units haven't been put online yet?
Correct. What did you say?
So we were talking about the, they're doing remodels to the plan, and the odor control units haven't been put online yet. Or are those the ones they were switching out?
No, that was the CentriVerge.
Yeah, I, yeah, they, they have, part of the project is new odor control units. I know they're not installed yet. So there's.
So there's hopefully it's gonna be some relief in the future. But like I said, a lot of it's probably just the way the wind blows on a given day, I would imagine.
Of the hill.
Yeah. I know some days I notice it on Park Street, and other days I don't, so.
The other thing, it sounds, I sound silly. We have a cat problem in our neighborhood, like, we don't have any animals, and there's probably a dozen cats that come, maybe even more, that come on our property. And it, we have tried ways to deter them, to keep them off. I mean, it's just, it's not, it's not feasible to try to keep them off. And I didn't know if there's any prospects of any type of ordinances for cats. I know there's generally for dogs, you can't just have a dog running around. But it just became such an issue for, for my husband and I, that they're peeing and peeing towards our foundation on our home. So that's, that's the really biggest issue, to try to, to compensate for that, to try to figure out how to stop them. And just curious if other people have complained about cats in the neighborhood, or if there's just been any discussion at all about, about that?
No, I'm not aware of any discussion. I haven't, I haven't had any. I know that a lot of the animal shelters, it's really hard to drop cats off if they're trapped. They're, they're, they have a limit.
Two per week.
Right.
This, I think these cats are owned by a particular house. There's at least six in their bill yard at any given time, so. Is there, is there like a limit?
No, there's, there's no limit. I mean, I don't think, especially you take dogs, dogs are registered. There's more governance behind it, but I don't think there's really any governance behind cats.
We do have, we do have animal control, and you can call dispatch, which is 753-2500.
Okay, 'cause I just didn't know, are, are we even allowed to like, put a trap on our property to trap something? Like, the cat get, like, I just don't even know what we're legally allowed to, to do to try to.
I would definitely call a professional.
753, yeah.
I would check into that. I couldn't give you an answer. I don't know.
Okay.
Sir, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, there's a couple things, like, well, the biggest thing is, I, the, from the town ordinance, whoever, the Rick Haas there, the guy that, that stepped down, he gave me a cease and desil, cease and desist order, 'cause I've been trying to open up an automotive shop right there on Main Street, the old Bottle Redone. And I'm supposed to have an application at CentriVerge filled out, but 90% of this application, throw it up, tear it out, throw it in the trash, 'cause it doesn't involve anything. I'm not making any new buildings, I'm not building nothing, I'm not, there's no waste, there's no construction. I'm just using the existing building that is there. And I already have overhead doors placed that I've been using. And he had shut me down because I didn't get approval by the town, or by the board. And now that he's not here, I don't know how this works. I mean, I've got what I can of this paperwork filled out, but most of it, like I said, good. But most of it, as I said, get it, tear it up, throw it in the trash because it has nothing to do with me. So I don't know if I'm allowed to work, if I can just work myself, not as a business. Because I do have kids, I still got to put food on the table for them and stuff, so I don't, am I allowed to have a business? I mean, I paid my federal estate and everything. I've got my state ID number, a tax other number, whatever. I mean.
Have you, have you been to the planning board with us?
I was here a week or so ago and they told me to come back today with this paperwork, but the paperwork, there's like five things on these five pieces of paper that you could fill, all having a half sheet that would pertain to me.
I would imagine if it's still in place, the cease and desist would still, would still, would still carry. I'm, we're hoping to have a CEO that could help you with some questions. I just, I personally, I would go with what the paperwork says. I can't, I'm not going to override a, I don't think we have the authority to override a-
It needs, it needs to be submitted to the planning board.
I can take it if you have it now.
I've got the paper of what I can fill out, what do?
We'll present it at the next meeting in November. That will be the preliminary meeting. And if you could come, that would be great. It's the third Wednesday at 6:30. And the planning board will receive the paperwork and then if we have questions, we can. It's just a process. We have, we have one standard application for all businesses, so not everything.
Am I allowed to do a few things for personal, close friends to at least?
That's up to the board.
Little bit of food on the table for my kids and stuff while they're figuring all this out, whether I can have an actual business there or not. Because I've been there for like two years.
I, I don't have, I really don't feel comfortable making a decision like that tonight without all the information. And so I really don't feel it's, it's, it's up to us. Yes, Bill?
I have a question. On the cease and desist order, does it spell out what the issue is? I'm just curious if there's, if it, if it broke something up that the business is going to be brought in front of us. I wouldn't think we would need to know what the order was and exactly what it was against.
I'm not sure. I know he visited the property several times as well as other CEOs.
Yeah. I, yeah, I know. I, I'm just curious if it had specifics.
Was there a plan of action with the cease and desist order that he asked was to follow, was like written out?
He just told me that I, well, because I had to remove my tires from, that I had out for sale. I had to move them and because he didn't know if I owned the property or not. And then he said, before I do any other work, I have to come in front of the board because I was never approved to be an automotive shop. It was tile and floor, I mean tile and carpet. It was bottles, but never automotive. So I needed to come in front of you guys and he said it looked like a dump, but I know it's a little messy, but it's better than a rundown, broken building that kids were destroying and doing drugs in. It's slow going. It's just me doing it. No help from the state, no help from anybody, just whatever I can get together, pull together, fix enough as I go. Even if it's safe enough and good enough field to work in. And I mean, it's getting better. It's far from perfect, but work in progress, I guess.
I said, I don't really have the authority to override the cease and desist order. I don't feel we do. I'm hoping that we will have, we have some more interviews for CEO and we're going to keep looking. And hopefully, as soon as, as soon as we have one, I think maybe we could try to make sure, maybe have the CEO reach out to him as soon as we have one, so he's not just waiting on the planning board if one does come along sooner.
My number is on the paperwork. In the meantime, let the paperwork to the planning board so they can at least start the process.
He just gave it to Gail.
I know. But it's like, that's what I'm saying. Let's return it over to the planning board, let them do their due process. And pray for a CEO to drop out of the sky.
Dana?
I just want, on that note, if the, if it was going to drop out of the sky, how are we, how was the town, is it on Indeed? Or how was the town looking for the CEO? I was wondering.
It was posted on MMA's website.
Just curious.
And off the same address, but off a little different subject. Because the corner of Main and Gaggen, I have two driveways and that road was tied, not last summer, the summer before. It was never tapered into the driveway and was bottom almost like four inches. I didn't know if possibly we could try to figure out something before wintertime because it was kind of hellbound last year. Excuse my French, but.
Well, we'll get it small, but this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Billy.
I hadn't brought it up before. I, yeah. Thank you. But other than that, I'm all set.
All right. Well, hopefully we can get some answers for you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? Yes?
Not to beat a dead horse, although code of course been out of the issue, but been waiting almost three weeks for an 1194 to be signed for just changing the source of power into an existing lot. There needs to be some movement somewhere. Waiting is not really an option if it was an emergency, especially on a pre-established lot. If you check your phone, there's a copy of 1194 that the town manager has signed in the past.
All right. We'll look into this. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? I'm not seeing none.
I move to adjourn.
Seconded. All those in favor? Thank you, everybody, for your-